Wait for Max to get down to five thirty. Yes, it is.
It maps you.
Yeah.
Charged me an arm and a leg.
Hey.
Um, Melissa.
Yes?
No PTA today?
It's on the agenda, but I'm at five thirty, so.
Wait a minute, I don't know if we're on camera yet.
Max!
He had to go get a cable.
No, so we're not set up yet?
How are you?
We can wait till he gets back, it's fine.
Is he asleep tonight?
No.
How old is Professor Seig?
I don't know.
I think we have him on the agenda too tonight to talk about all these.
My seat, yeah?
Oh, okay. No idea. Just showed up.
Was he going back to the station or his car?
He needed a cable.
Well, I thought you were agreeing with him.
He didn't answer the follow-up questions.
No, I heard the cable phone.
He might have ran back out to his feet, I don't know.
Why was that what he said?
No.
We kind of need him because Priscilla's not here.
Right, good point.
I knew it was missing someone.
You're on Priscilla's seat.
I am in Priscilla's seat. I don't think people will be confused.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Always late.
No.
You ignore him.
It's five thirty, can we call the meeting at Oregon's? Dan and Swift, the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, agenda review?
I have something.
Okay.
Um... Committee updates. Can we just do B, like curriculum?
Sure.
It's just something I have to say. Nothing big.
Anybody else? Michelle?
Can we add the finance report to reports?
Sure.
I'll pass them around.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, so next we have presentations, public hearings. We had PTA, nobody's here for PTA. Okay. So, we'll go ahead and slide into public comments from there. Public comment is open. Anybody have anything? Welcome.
Evening. So, I'm Jared Fagoni, I'm the superintendent of the Rochester Public Schools, so I come up this evening just to introduce myself to you. Certainly as the person that's responsible for the education of your children from grades nine through twelve, I wanted to just come up and say hello and let you put a face with a name. Unfortunately, this is the best this face is gonna get, so I apologize for that, but I did just want to come up and just say hi. And I know at some point our boards are gonna get together. We sort of look forward to that, look forward to discussions about the area agreement as well, that we're still finalizing, get some dates on. But I did just want to just come up and say hi, and if there are some concerns, certainly as the superintendent of the district responsible for your high school children, I just did want to make myself available to you and let you know that if you do have concerns, either as a board or as a parent, please just feel free to reach out to me.
Good.
Thank you.
Anything I can answer for you now or do for you while I'm here?
Where do you live?
Where do I live?
Well, like in the area, you know, I don't need Georgia. I use New Hampshire.
So, yeah, so originally I'm one of those people that retired as a superintendent in Massachusetts for a long time, retired. Came to cross the line, did an interim up in Maine for a district up there, and then got called and asked if I would do the interim in Rochester to help them out. But I actually live in Elliott, Maine, so, not too far away from Rochester. So, it's a very reasonable commute. I used to have to commute down to the cities of Hayrow and Lawrence and those large, you know, cities in Massachusetts. So, this is the shortest commute I've ever had.
Nice.
So, yeah.
That's great.
Nice. Well, it's very nice to meet you.
Absolutely. So, again, we look forward to seeing you, I'm sure, at some point here in the pretty near future, where I think we're gonna try to get together.
Yeah.
But I did just want to come up, recommend that you had a board meeting this evening, so I just wanted to come up and introduce myself and let you know that if there's something I can do for you, please just go ahead.
Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I think that's a first for us.
Excellent.
You're so nice.
Okay, so reports, we have enrollment report. Page four. Questions?
Going up and down daily.
Yes, every day, every day.
Okay.
Well, since I've seen that in a long time.
Yeah.
Okay. Next we have finance report.
Yes, sorry, I've not been able to give one since July, but with the conversion, the report was rather messy, and I just finished cleaning it up. So, um, it's a little different than our last system. But it's by function. If you have any questions, and I will say the bottom line is not point, four point five million. I just did a PO for Spalding and a PO for Kingswood. So, our end imbalance is one point two million, three hundred, one million, two hundred, thirty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars after those POs are approved. And I ran a year-long report, so this is from seven one to six thirty twenty-six.
See, you're up?
I know we're gonna talk about this later, but have we already encumbered or, no, okay.
That is not encumbered.
Okay. But that would have to be paid out of this.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We are having difficulty encumbering our twenty-sixth payroll, which is the last payroll in June. We have a ticket open, so that might alter the end imbalance as well.
Any other questions, concerns? Let's move on to, oh.
I just want, Michelle, did you want to touch on, I know, Michelle, I wanted to talk a little bit about the school care. And what I said to her is that we'll talk more formal on the twenty-first, because we're supposed to do it at a public meeting, and where I didn't want to add this tonight, I'd rather talk a little bit about it tonight and then just add this one piece to our budget meeting, so that way it's on the agenda, so if anybody has any questions or concerns about it, they can come and meet with us, whereas it didn't get on the agenda, so anybody that looked on the agenda this evening would not know that we were talking about this, and so I wanted to make sure it was on our agenda formally. But if you, she can talk.
For tonight?
Yeah, she can just do a quick talk about, because this has to do with the budget stuff.
Okay.
If you want to know a little bit of information about it, but it'd be more formal on the twenty-first.
On the twenty-first, okay.
Thank you.
So, we had some news a week and a half ago from school care, which is who helps, who takes care of our medical insurance. Cigna is our provider, but it goes through school care, and they are in a four point five million dollar deficit this year. So, we, all the school district that participated in twenty twenty-five has been hit with an assessment tax and a bill, so we have to pay it by December thirty-first or be charged a five percent rate fee per month. If we don't pay by May fifteenth, they will put our claims on hold. If we don't pay by July fifteenth, they will deny all our claims, and then our employees will be responsible to pay all their bills. So, this is going to impact our fiscal year twenty-six budget. So, we will talk about it on October twenty-first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Michelle. Yes?
I apologize, because I didn't realize that my principal report, my special education report and my report was not on there, so is it okay if I add those to reports? Because they're here to give a report. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
I look down, I'm like, where'd it go? So, maybe you can.
Yeah, absolutely, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. I was just gonna say there in front of you, Donna.
Yeah.
October tenth is teacher workshop day, this Friday. We have sessions planned out to explore and fine-tune knowledge in academic programs. We finalized our fall testing, K through three completed their STAR assessment, and four through eight completed NWEA assessments. We'll be utilizing the beginning-of-year assessments along with student work to drive our instruction and our interventions. Committees have begun in our meeting monthly. Each committee is working to build on their work from last year and continue to increase our progress at the Paul School. Committees for this year include school events, curriculum, family and community engagement in outreach, technology, PTA, culture and climate, health and wellness, point loss, and co-curricular segments. We have completed two safety drills so far this year. One was a fire drill, one was a lockdown, and both were carried out efficiently and successfully. Our staff and students responded very quickly and appropriately, demonstrating clear understanding of our safety protocols. And we're gonna continue to hold drills regularly throughout the year to ensure preparedness. School pictures were today, it was great to see the kids all dressed up and snazzy. They did a great job with the change in schedule, it was very smooth, very efficient. Over the weekend, Saturday, was the East Wakefield Fall Festival. That was very successful for our eighth graders, who used that opportunity to try and raise some money for their U.C. trip. They raised just over a thousand dollars. It was around a thousand fifty dollars that they brought in, really exciting. So, coming at the end of October, we have our first Community Day slated for the thirty-first. We're going to celebrate on this day with our annual Paul School Halloween parade, followed by classroom celebrations. Be on the lookout for more details about this day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know what the time was for your fire drill?
I have it written down, I can go get it.
Oh, I was just curious.
Yeah, we were, it was amazing.
Did it mean longer to check all the rounds than it did for the kids?
We were outside and ready to go, and he was inside doing the chief with Brad.
Yeah.
And we were ready, I mean, under six minutes.
That's awesome.
It was very quick.
Good, very good.
Yes.
Do you tell them when you're gonna have a fire drill? There you go, okay. I think he asked this question a couple years ago, I think, so tell them.
Yeah.
I think select families were told.
Yeah.
There was written out on the, that the staff gets of when the fire drills were, and I said to them, "We can't let the staff know when the fire drills are either, I mean, it's supposed to be surprise," so.
Morning notice.
Yeah.
We have.
Or even they know what the year.
We have a short list of kids that need to know ahead, and we all know what that means, and, you know, those kids are aware, and those staff members are aware. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Student Services report, hopefully you have a copy of it in front of you. Anyone missing one? Okay, great, thank you. So, current numbers of Wakefield students on IEPs. At the Paul School, we have seventy-nine. At Spalding High, we have thirty-three. But Carlson Academy, which is part of Spalding High, we have two students. Kingswood Regional High School, we have seven this year. And we have six students in an out-of-district specialized school on IEPs. Our educational disabilities, you know, fall into a certain category. For all of the Wakefield students, autism makes up twenty-one of our students. Developmental delay makes up eight of our students, and as you know, that that only goes from ages three through eight, and then we get a more specialized disability based on evaluations. Emotional disability would be six students. Intellectual disability, three students. Other health impairment, the majority of those are ADHD. We have thirty-six students with that primary disability. Specific learning disability, we have thirty-four students. And speech and language impairment, we have nineteen students. Currently at the Paul School, on five oh four accommodation plans are twenty-six students. Those are general education students that just require classroom accommodations as opposed to specially-designed instruction on an IEP. As of last night, our current New Hampshire Department of Ed Special Education compliance data is ninety-eight percent, which means that we're meeting the deadlines required under special education state and federal law. Regarding new information or updates, we had a very successful summer school session this July. We extended it to four hours a day as opposed to three hours a day as it's been in the past. We ran our summer session from July eighth through the thirty-first, three days a week, being held on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. We had fifty-four students enrolled and attend, which included general education students as well as students on IEPs and also five oh four plans. Second little update, as I mentioned last spring, we are going to become a CPI-trained school. Next week is CPI Train the Trainer, and that takes place on October fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth at the CPI Institute in Nashua, New Hampshire. Our school trainers include Megan Nason, Melissa Cataro, Aaron Nason, and myself. And as I explained at last spring's school board meeting, CPI, which stands for the Crisis Prevention Institute, is the world's leading provider of evidence-based de-escalation training. CPI programs equip the school staff with crisis intervention and de-escalation skills that reduce challenging behavior and help to prevent future incidents. Over seventeen million individuals nationally are trained in CPI's de-escalation techniques and are making measurable impacts on the safety of their schools. There are three levels of CPI. The first level is called verbal intervention training, and we will make sure all staff is trained in that regardless of their role. The second level is a little more intense. It's called the non-violent crisis intervention, and that will be for a smaller group than all staff. So, level one, all staff, level two, some staff. And that type of training for level two provides the skills to safely recognize and respond to everyday crisis situations, including safe disengagements and restrictive interventions. The most intense level is level three, which is also a non-violent crisis intervention with advanced physical skills, and that will be for a small, select group of staff. And that training provides the staff who work with students who demonstrate dangerous or complex behavior and teaches safe and advanced disengagement skills. So, as I mentioned, it happens to be three days next week in Nashua, and our goal is for the four of us, the people I just mentioned, to become CPI trainers, that training certificate is good for two years, that we will come back and train the appropriate staff in levels one, two, and/or three based on their role. CPI is recognized nationally, and it's also used in most school districts. So, it will be extremely beneficial for Paul School staff and students. And that's it for Student Services.
Great, thank you, Carol.
You're welcome.
So, next we have the superintendent's report.
Yes, so you should have my update. So, yesterday we did the walkthrough, Brad and I did the walkthrough that we had talked about at our budget meeting. So, we did the entire school and the SAU, overall it went very well. Only a few items needed to be removed from classrooms. We did notice, though, when we were walking through, that there were items that were placed against the vents, so the heating vents, and so we had mentioned something to staff about you can't have stuff on your vents. And so we continue to, the plan is for us to continue to do these walkthroughs and making sure now that we don't have any microwaves, lights, refrigerators, those types of things plugged in in our facility, as well as making sure our vents are clear, so that way our heat can go through, and there's nothing, no paper, no books, nothing on them. So, that was good. We do have some upcoming inspections coming up. One of them is Homeland Security. So, Homeland Security is gonna be coming out to do an inspection of Paul School and the SAU. So, what they do is they're looking at the safety and security of our building. No one knows, well, I know when they're coming, but no one else knows when they're coming. Just a select few people, I should say, like the fire chief knows and the police chief knows, because they're part of this. So, what they'll do is they're going to walk around the entire outside of our building and then come inside and walk through the entire inside of our building and check for our safety and security, and then when they're done, they'll compile a report that I will present to the board on safety measures and things that we may need to put in place for the safety of our students and staff here at Paul School, as well as at the SAU office. On January twentieth, we have a federal grant review, so that.
Just, I had one question on that. Is that because we don't have an SRO, is that something we need to be concerned about?
It may be, there may be a recommendation from Homeland Security. They may say this is, you know, one of the things that would be helpful to have in place, so they may recommend that type, maybe recommend that piece. On January twentieth, we have the Department of Education coming out to do a monitoring on our federal grants. So, they're gonna look through any of our policies that pertain to grants and grant spending, our general insurances, and they're gonna select certain activities from the grant year twenty-four, twenty-five, and they're gonna ask for the supporting documents. So, they're going to make sure that we are paying, you know, paying what we're supposed to be paying, we're using the grants for what we say we're using them for, and they're being used appropriately.
Remember.
Yes, and then when they're done, we'll also get a report back about that, if there's any adjustments or changes we need to make. One of the things that you may have noticed in your three oh sixes is that there's a, the DOE school approval, every five years, right about every five years, every public school has to go through an approval process based on the state standards. So, they look at these standards, they come in and they evaluate your school to make sure your school is meeting these guidelines. If not, then they give you so long to meet them, or your school is not certified as a public education facility any longer, right? And so, right now, I'm not sure, well, it says next month's, I'm not sure when our next monitoring visit is, but I'm gonna confirm with you. I did reach out to a few people, and they said, "Let us get back to you on that." What I get nervous about is when I ask staff that have been working here for years, and I say, "When was your last monitoring?" And they're like, "I don't remember that we had one in the last four, four or five years." And so I get nervous going, "Oh, gosh," because things happen in threes. And so I have Homeland Security, federal grants, and I'm like, "Oh, boy, what's the third?" So, I'm hoping it's not that one. And you'll see that once you read the three oh sixes if you haven't had the chance to go through them. Yesterday, I sent out a survey to parents, staff, students, and community members for feedback on weather-related decisions such as, "Do I close school at night? Do I wait until the morning? Do I do delays? What do I do?" You know, what helps our community and our families. So, the survey's gonna remain open until seven o'clock on Friday, the tenth. So far, I've received one hundred and sixty-one responses, which is really good for a survey, because normally you don't receive, you know, very, very few. Normally you receive very few. Out of that, one hundred and fourteen have been parents or guardians, forty-five have been staff members, and two have been students. So, what they've shared so far is eighty-eight of the, eighty-eight of the total prefer the call at night before the storm. Thirty-four prefer the call in the morning, and thirty-nine have no preference. So, right now, it's meaning that parents would rather be called at night, and if it doesn't, if the storm doesn't hit that bad in the morning, then, you know, I wouldn't call and say, "Okay, school's back on." It would be, "School's off, it's off." And so we have that, and again, that goes till October tenth. So, anyone that has not answered that, please go ahead on and answer the survey. School lunch program, I'm really excited about our school lunch program this year, and I'm talking about our free and reduced lunch. Last year, we had a hundred and eight students qualify for this. As of two days ago, a hundred and forty-six now qualify, which is an increase of thirty-eight students. So, that's absolutely amazing. So, that's about thirty-seven percent of our population qualifies for free and reduced lunch. However, I know it's more. So, I'm pleading, begging, and I'm trying to do everything I can to get parents to apply, because once we reach over forty, some great things will start to happen here in our district, one of them being our school for next year will be considered a Title I school-wide school, which right now we're targeted. So, what that means is only certain kids can receive Title I services. If we become a Title I school, all of our kids can receive services. So, that's a big change. The second big thing that would happen, and there's probably gonna be a lot of work on our end, but we're ready to do the work, is that if we reach a certain population, all of our students would qualify for free breakfast and lunch. Every single student that comes into our building would qualify for free lunch, and that could be huge on our budget, because we're putting, Michelle probably knows better, how much money?
Over three hundred thousand.
Into our lunch program, so that's, that would be huge for our district. So, we're hopeful.
That's great. Thank you very much, Donna, that's great. Any questions? We move on to consent agenda. Get motion, anybody?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, nay.
Nay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wakefield School Board public minutes of nine two twenty-five.
I'll second.
As written.
I'll second with any amendments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve Wakefield School Board public minutes budget work of nine thirty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So, old business, we have transportation bus sale. Yes, Donna?
So, the buses are sold, and we have one, because we didn't have a title, so we're just waiting for the title for that one. So, there'll be one more transportation meeting after that's all said and done, so that way the committee can kind of figure everything out and close it out.
Great. Okay. Any questions, comments? Okay. Let's move on to new business, we have the three oh sixes first. Go ahead, Donna.
So, I sent the three oh sixes to all the board members because I wanted them to kind of look at them. I didn't really have, didn't plan on or have a presentation to do tonight. It was more or less I wanted you to kind of look at them and see, this is what governs a school, this is what makes us, these are our standards that we have to apply, abide by. And so I wanted you kind of just to take a look at them, and I know Heather had sent me a few questions, and I didn't know if you wanted to address it with the board as a whole, because they may have the same questions, but, or if anybody else has any questions.
I'm happy to share, I don't have the questions on me.
I do. Would you like to have your questions?
If you all want to hear what my questions were, and.
Not to put you on the spot, Heather, I'm sorry. But they were great questions, so it felt, it should be good to share with the board.
All right, so my first one was sort of an overall, because, you know, some of the major changes to the minimum standards included replacing specific course requirements with broader learning opportunities, eliminating maximum class sizes, shifting some language from Shao to Mei, and my basic question for Donna was, looking at the big picture, what impact do these changes perhaps have on us at? What impact do these changes perhaps have on us at Paul School? And, do you want me to do your answers? Or you want to do your answers? And Donna's response was, I don't see these changes having any impact on Paul School as they are minimum standards. The standards we choose can be above these standards, just not below. I was confused. I had thought I understood Donna to say that in order for us to receive. Title funds or federal funds, we had to be a common core school, which we are not. But it's that we have to adhere to state standards was the answer from Donna. As I read the beginning of the standards, they talked about differentiation, individualization, and personalization of curriculum. And I wanted an explanation on the differences between those three. And sort of a, an example in the classroom of what that looks like from all three. So differentiation is when a teacher adapts instruction for groups of students. Based on their readiness levels, interests, or learning profiles. Everyone is working toward the same learning goal, but the process or materials are adjusted. So an example, in a reading class, students are grouped by reading level. One group reads a simpler version of a story, another reads the original text, and a third analyzes more complex themes. But all groups discuss the same main idea. Whereas individualization is when instruction is paced to the learning needs of each student. So the learning goal is the same, but students are moving at different speeds. So in a math program, all students must master fractions, for example. Some students move on after one week, while others spend extra time with guided practice and review before advancing. Personalization is when the instruction is tailored to each student's interests, preferences, and goals. Students often have a voice in what and how they learn. So for a research project, one student chooses to study the effects of pollution on marine life. While others explore how recycling impacts local communities. Both are meeting the same science standards, but through topics they care about. Thank you. That was, that was very clear. And then I did ask a question about, because as I read this, I just saw policy updates everywhere. And I had asked Donna if there was any clear priority list in terms of policies needing more immediate revision or adoption. And what we will do, this is Donna, we receive our updates to policies from New Hampshire School Board Association. And, you know, the New Hampshire School Board Association works closely with the DOE on policies. So, that's good. I just was, I haven't seen any updates from them, and I'm thinking, when are they, when are they coming? But they'll, they'll be here. In your opinion, should Paul School update its school philosophy goals and objection, objections, objectives in compliance with Ed. three oh six point oh five? Donna, yes, this will go along with our Portrait of a Learner, which will help guide our strategic plan. And then I asked, does SAU one oh one have a professional development plan? Because I didn't know if we did, and yes, we do. And it's on the website, so that's my bad. I didn't see it on the website. Oh, and then I asked about the world language program and whether we are required to have one. Because I saw contradictory language in portions of three oh six and RSA one ninety-three. The answer, world languages for next year. Yeah, just like we should be teaching certain topics in social studies, which we are not. I think that was pretty much the, oh, and I had asked about the fire approval process.
Yeah, yeah.
Which we don't know. Thank you.
You're welcome. So one of the things that we did today is the curriculum committee met and went, and were given the three oh sixes. Right? So that way they could take a look at it, to understand what drives a school district. And they were all very shocked that they have never seen this before. So they were like a little bit thrown, because they're like, oh my gosh, we should, this has been one of the first things that we kind of looked at. Before we did anything, because we need to look at this and then determine where do we go from here. And so Erin worked with them and said, okay, we're going to look at these, digest them, think about them. And then at the next meeting, they're going to come back with, with any questions or concerns. And things about, where do we go from here? You know, because where, where we talked about, I mean, in the three oh sixes, you'll see that in eighth grade, you're supposed to be learning about the Holocaust, right? You're supposed to be learning about civics, right? There's also the test that, the citizenship test that all seniors need to take in order to graduate. That can be taken in eighth grade, right? And which would be the best time for them to take it, because that's when they're learning the certain topics that are on the test. Right? And so, and it helps our kids, because they're not in high school. And if they take it the first year and they don't pass it, then they have to take it the second year and they don't pass it. And then now they don't have social studies again for the rest of the year. And then they're required to take this test, and then they don't pass it, and then they can't graduate from high school because they didn't pass the civics test. So what can we do to work with our kids? You know, we had a lot of talk about how our kids are, seem to be further behind than what we, what we thought, right? What they thought, they were like, you know, wow, this is, you know, some of the stuff that we're seeing that our kids are supposed to learn is not taught at the grade levels in which it should be. You know, and so we're saying, yeah, so how do we fix this? How do we fix this for our kids? So that was, there was a lot of great discussions, I think, in that. And I don't know, Erin, if you wanted to add anything about that, but I thought it was a really good discussion on the three oh sixes.
Yeah, no, it was productive, considering nobody had laid eyes on them before we got in there. And we had a couple of staff members that are a little bit more proactive. So while we were like starting to chew on them, they were already starting to go through them and break them down. So we're kind of looking for kind of different tiers of, what are the things that like were way off on? Like world languages, that's a, that's a big problem that like we can't solve in a curriculum committee. But there's some stuff where we can look at and tweak to kind of come in alignment. Or we might be there, we just are approaching it in a way that kind of like contradicts other stuff. So we're all just kind of go hard, over the next month, look at them, review them, come through them, and then come back with like, what did you find that you think is like actionable? And then kind of go from there.
Mary?
Are we going to get a presentation about the ELA, the standards that were completed last year? They were completed.
The power standards?
I'm sorry?
The power standards that we're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, we did it.
No, we didn't plan on doing one, but I know.
I, I would, we, previous, we were, we were going to do, like at the end of last year. We were supposed to have one, have a presentation done. So it's explained to the board. Now I would like the board to approve it. Parents can listen and understand what the standards are that the school is using. And if they have any questions, then they can reach out. But, you know, there was, a lot of time went into creating the standards. And they are our own standards. You know, the teachers put them, they're fantastic. So I'm very proud of the work that they've done. Now, I, I would like to showcase the work that they have done.
Heather, you're in?
Oh, I was only going to say, I, I felt for the staff, as when I read these, I was a little overwhelmed at first. Which was why so many questions went to Donna, and I pared them down from the long, long list that I had.
Before, before you go, I just, I, I, I agree, I've got concerns that we're not, the work that's been done up till now doesn't get us where we need to be. Because we don't, we're not aligned with New Hampshire state standards. We had way too many kids sitting in front of computers for way too long last year. Testing to, like, learning to take a test to get us to where we need to be for the state. Instead of learning for their education and their future. And if all the work that's been done up to then is, and that's where we've gotten to. I think it's, it might not be the best to say, okay, we've got this done, let's do a presentation. I think an analysis needs to be done, and if it was the right work.
No, I want a presentation of the standards, because this is what we're going by. This was not, they were not done last year, they're not in use last year.
But I agree, right. I think the work needs to be done to make sure they're right before you get a presentation on it.
But this...
What I can say is I know that the committee that met today, and Erin, if I'm, if I'm incorrect, please. Want to go with New Hampshire standards. The curriculum committee want to do, want to go with the New Hampshire standards, because they're saying, we're doing our kids no justice. One of the, one of the members that was there said her, her teacher, her best friend is a teacher in Rochester. And says, our kids are suffering.
It's not what they, it's not what the school board says in Rochester.
It may not be with the school board.
They say they're actually better, Wakefield's students are better than the Rochester kids.
So, so we're listening to a school board, or we're listening to the teachers that are teaching our kids? This is a Rochester teacher.
Do you need to be paid here or academically? Can I ask a clarifying question?
I, I, I think it's academically.
It's academically, but we did have teachers there too.
Yeah, and I have firsthand experience, and that's not true.
This is just what I'm hearing. I'm hearing our kid, and I, and I heard from another staff member who went to school there. And she said that when her, when she was in school, the Rochester kids did a lot, I mean, excuse me. The Wakefield kids did do worse than the Rochester kids, and they had to do, and she kept referring to D Block. They had to go to D Block, where most other kids did not have to go to D Block, because they were so far behind the other kids. So, so, and this was a, this was a...
I could agree with that.
That's, I'm sorry, that's not what D Block was, because...
But that was a long time ago, we were told. We haven't had a board meeting with Rochester in years. So that could have been, I mean, since I've been on the board, we had one. So it's been at least four, four, five years, we've had, four or five years, we've had one meeting.
No, we've been to two.
Yeah, we've had two.
We've had at least two.
I don't think, I don't think we're...
The last one was when we had other people there, teachers there too.
Yeah, that was the ones that were speaking to us, and that's what we said. We keep getting concerns from our parents and from our staff, saying that our kids are behind. And they pulled up graphs, they pulled up everything, and saying that we were ahead of the Rochester kids.
But the thing I worry about, right, is, is, am I going to bring staff to a meeting? Like, if I was to bring my staff to a meeting, are they going to say in front of the superintendent? Our, your kids are not doing well?
Yeah, probably not.
I think she was...
So who do we trust? We trust the people that are in, in the, in the mix, right? These, this, and I don't know if this teacher would come forward, right, and talk to you individually. But this is a teacher that works with our kids every day, and she's saying our kids are struggling. We have students that, I get at least two to three phone calls every day from parents that want their kids out of the district. Right? Because their kids are struggling, right? And so maybe some of our kids are doing really well. I look at the, I look at some of our programs, and I think a couple of our, our people today even made comments about it. Saying that a lot of the stuff that our kids are being taught is, like, if you're, if you're in fourth grade and you're teaching fourth grade. Where I used to teach, that, that, I would, that's like what they're learning in fifth grade, is what I should be teaching. So currently, our fifth graders are learning first grade, fourth grade stuff. Where it should, you know, they should be learning fourth grade stuff. So, so I, I'm hearing, and I'm new to this, and I'm hearing different information than, than you guys are hearing. And I, and I'm sitting with the teachers and hearing that some of them were saying, you know, I would, we'd like for the board to reconsider and, and vote to go to, to our New Hampshire standards.
What are the, what's the difference that you're going to have?
What do you mean, New Hampshire standards? What's that?
So what, what our kids are tested on.
No, but what is it?
It's not Common Core, is it?
It's not Common Core, no.
Yeah, so she's looking for...
So what is it though?
No, I don't know what it is. I was saying, that was the question you were trying to get around.
No, I know.
I mean, I can, I can, I can send you the standards. Each individual subject area has its own standards that every school in New Hampshire goes by. So what happens is if we have, and, and one of the main reasons they do this, right, is the consistency among districts. So if we have a, a student that is here in our district, and they move to Manchester, so they're in second grade. And they come out of second grade, and they go to Manchester, and they go in second grade. There's not going to be that catch-up, right? It's going to be the same. So what you're, what the standards are in second grade, what kids need to know by the time they end second grade is the same here and the same here, so there's not that difference. So our kids can move around freely to other schools, and there's not a discrepancy on what they're being taught. And so that's why they're saying, it would be nice to have that. So the kids coming into us are above in some, in some parts, where our kids currently are. Right? And so there, it's, it's some of their years, and, and, you know, we've, we've heard it from, from parents, the board has heard it from parents. That my kid comes here for a year, and they're way above, and they just slide through the whole year not doing anything. And they don't have to do the work, because it's, it's all easy for them. They just take the test, and that's it. And they pass the test, right? And so we're, we're hearing this from, from families. So we're trying to figure out, how can we catch our kids up? And make sure that they're, they're, they're meeting the, the goals, and they're meeting the standards. Because one of the reality is, is that if you fail your state testing so many times. The Department of Education comes in and takes over your school. Right? And so if we're not assisting our kids with getting them to where they need to be, we're doing our kids a disservice. Right? And so that, and, and that's what I'd like to see for our kids. I'd like for our kids to, to walk high, once they leave this, this, I'd say leave Paul School. Walk high with their heads held high, knowing that they can do just as well as anybody else in any other school.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that's lovely. Can you, I'm going to guess maybe a presentation on what the New Hampshire standards would be? Could we do that for like a parent night for people, and then?
It's Common Core. It's Common Core.
It's not. The standards are separate than the grading system. And the reality is that we are in an area, we, we send our kids to Spalding, we send our kids to Kingswood, Kingswood. We, like, we should be aligned with all those school districts with our standards.
If it, if it's, if it's Common Core, we don't have Common Core here.
Right.
Or we, or they squeak a few things in that is Common Core related. And Spalding is Common Core. So our student, we said our students would be missing something, but we were, we were told that they weren't. They were actually doing a better job without it.
But the grading system is separate than the standards.
The, and...
I don't think that they worry about Common Core as far as the grading system. I don't think that's the hiccup.
It's not. And I would like to say that the standards that the staff just spent two years working on is aligned with Rochester. That was part of gathering all the information about the standards, is to make that connection stronger, so...
I guess I would like to see an analysis of our standards that we worked hard creating versus what the New Hampshire state standards are. And see which one's more rigorous, which one's more appropriate. And that's kind of what we got, and I think we should get that a side-by-side comparison. Because, I mean, we've sat here for two years, and we keep saying, oh, we're working on standards, we're working on standards. We've never had a presentation. We don't know what it's like. But I mean, not just a presentation on our standards. I want a presentation on our standards versus what the state standards are. And I would hope that the presentation shows that our standards are more rigorous. Or, and not, you know, or at least in line with every, every other district that we, we work with. I mean, that's kind of, that's what I would like to see.
You know, all the schools are different, it's different demographic of...
I'd actually like to hear from Rochester, see how, how our kids are doing there.
Art, if you ask the teachers, I've spoken to some of the teachers, even if it's, it was presented at the school board meeting. But we all know teachers who work there. You know, we all know families who, whose kids go to Spalding. And we have all heard how, you know, how our kids are doing. And they're doing really well. I mean, I, you know, that's what I hear.
Well, that's, I mean, you may hear that. I, it's funny, I...
I hear it too.
I, I hear completely separate.
I don't know. See, that, that's what I don't understand. I don't understand why, like, what, you hear the exact opposite. I mean, I, you know, and I hear all good things, and how well our students are doing in Rochester and Kingswood.
What do a lot of teachers say here? Would they like to see something different?
Well, I, there's only, I just spoke with a small few today, right? And so I think that some of them were excited to not have to be using mass standards and working on New Hampshire standards. And so I think that some of them were excited to not have to be using mass standards and working on New Hampshire standards.
Okay, let's get to where it goes.
To be continued.
Well, I, I would still like the presentation of the standards so parents and everyone can look at the standards and see what we're using. Cuz at the moment, that's what we're using.
If it's any Common Core, the, the parents are gonna come in and absolutely say no.
But if it says that it's, um, if the New Hampshire standards are Common Core, which I'm pretty sure they are because I haven't heard anything that they've changed that is different. There may be some similarities, but when Common Core came out, it's, they took, you know, their math books or their math programs and stuck a Common Core sticker on it. So, um, these, the standards that um our school uh put together were based on uh different standards um from different places in conjunction, like I said, with Rochester, what they're doing over there, what Wolfboro is doing. And it's not like, they just didn't, they, there's a lot of time put into them. The, they dissected all the words, all the sentences, so the um, the ICAN statements and everything. It was just, it's clear. Every teacher worked on it. The school worked on it. They had professional development days where they sat and say, yes, this is what we're doing in second grade. Yes, this is, you progress to the third grade and it's all connected. So, and I would like that to be presented at the, before the board. Let's see why we can't.
To speak.
If I can just, just ask a clarifying question. What is the expectation for these, for these standards? Do you expect the, the teachers to just have the standards and teach what they want to teach? Or do you expect them to have programs that match the standards? I'm not sure, because if you're saying that you just, we just are gonna lay out standards in front of teachers and let them teach what they wanna teach, that worries me. That worries me because we have new teachers, we have teachers that have never taught before and for them to have a program that teaches along with the, with standards is gonna be much more helpful for the teachers, is gonna be much more helpful for the kids and you're going to have vertical alignment.
Yeah, well, that's what, you don't get to teach whatever you want. This is a government-run school, first of all. But the standards, like that's, the teachers. It's, and uh, this is how I feel, like the teachers, they do need some, you know, um leeway with, because there are so many different learning abilities with the students. They need to have different programs. They need to have different, you know, with different books and things like that. They, to make sure that their child, their student is learning what they're supposed to be learning in that grade.
Correct, and we're required to do that by the three oh sixes, right? Cuz as Heather just read to you, the difference between the three oh sixes. So they are required to do that, but my question to you would be, who chooses what they do? So if they have, I'll use your scenario. If they have books, who chooses the books? Are you allowing the staff to choose the books that they want the kids to read? Or you, are you allowing, like, who chooses those books is, is my question. If you have a program that says, you know, that we're gonna be teaching, um, I'm trying to think. We're gonna be teaching, um.
Main idea.
Main, thank you. We're gonna be teaching main idea. Here's the books that you use for main idea. So now they've got that and they've got, they've got a, a thing to go along with. This is how you teach main idea. This is how you do it. This is what you do. This is what you, how you work with the kids, and then you get three sets of books. One book for your lower level kids, one book for your higher level kids, one book for your um kids that are in grade level. And then you have the audio for kids that can't, can't read. Who chooses that?
That's why.
Do we give each kid, that, that's what I mean. So if you're just saying, we just use standards, you can't just use standards. You have to use.
I understand that because then you use the curriculum to support your standards. That's, the curriculum drives the standards, so you have the standards in which um the curriculum is instructional material which curriculum committee is supposed to look at and make recommendations. There are teachers who have worked at our school for years and years and, and they know what has worked with their students. They share this information. So curriculum committee looks, takes a program, you know, that is recommended or a book that is recommended, say, oh, this works really well. Then they investigate it, research it, do a presentation. This is what we would like to bring to the school for our students to use. That's, this is part of our instruction. This is what we would like to use. So then the parents see it and, you know, and the school, everyone in the town gets to see it. What's being brought to the school.
Right, which they have the right by law to be able to know what their kids are being taught. But my question, that, then it leads me back to a few years ago, we had a committee that had, that met and said, here's the literacy program that we want to. They had a presentation, they did all the research, they did everything and nobody purchased the program for them. So you're doing the same thing with these power standards. You're having the, the committee do all of this work, do all of this. Why can't we just, like I said to the committee today, go back, look at that, you guys already did all the research on that program. Why don't you go back, take another look at it, and if that's the literacy program that you guys still wanna move forward with, then let's bring that one forward to the team. Right, because they've already done that.
Well, I don't know why some things, especially when you have a small group. I know there was a small group that did a literacy, you know, workshop, whenever. But you, when you take a small group and not expand to the rest of the school and the rest of the district, that's when it becomes a problem. That's when it's an issue because you'll have someone who say, no, don't like it, we'll shut it down. You know, unfortunately, that's how some, some programs and instructional materials, that's how it just worked. Coming here at the school. But when you have something that the entire staff has been a part of, has been involved in, in support, you know, the pro, or the standards, who want to have this in our school and say, yes, this is what we want. Why wouldn't you have a presentation on it? And it works the same, um, you know, for books. Any um resources that you use for the entirety of the school. Why wouldn't people be on board with that? The teacher, if one teacher says, oh, this is, this is working really well, it's easy to teach, the students understand it. You share that information. That's the whole point of sharing the information, you know, it.
I'll just add that it's because these standards have been worked on with using Massachusetts as a guideline?
No, we did, we didn't.
Cuz it's, we've been here to Massachusetts, we've gone based on Massachusetts standards?
That's.
We did.
Okay, so.
The, the math, that's not what we worked, that's not what we completed, though. That's not what we're talking about.
But, and I don't, I don't disagree. I think it's making sure that all this work that was done meets the standards of what's provided by the state of New Hampshire. Because I know for a fact that parents were not happy that their kids were sitting in front of a computer, learning to make sure that we passed the test last year.
No, no, I know that.
That was terrible.
No, no parent wants their child sitting in front of the computer.
Instead of saying, let's just, I, I'm not saying the presentation's wrong. I'm saying that, that all the work that's been done up to now needs to be compared and contrasted to what New Hampshire state standards are. And then, you know, okay, we're good to go. And make sure that it hits that stage gate and moves through. And so that if we're gonna move forward with this and all that work is gonna be continued to be done and we're gonna take it to the next level, that it matches up with New Hampshire state standards. Cuz if it's not, then what's the point? What's the point of bringing a presentation forward if they don't meet the standards?
See what it is.
Yeah, but what if it's, what if it doesn't meet the minimum?
Standards. It meets the minimum standards.
Are we meet the minimum standards now?
We don't know.
No.
If you have a.
We're not meeting minimum standards now.
It has nothing to do with the standards that were completed because they, they have not been presented to the board. They, you know, and they haven't been approved to be used, so.
So I think we need to do our due diligence and make sure that what's gonna be brought before the board.
And who's gonna do it then? Like who's gonna compare?
So I think that, that, I think that's something that we'd have to work on our team with, is looking at the standards and the standards that have been completed and the New Hampshire standard and, and doing a compare and contrast of them. But it's, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be like an overnight thing because, you know, we also, we're gonna compare and contrast and we're gonna look at the three oh sixes to say, do these all line up, right? Cuz we don't wanna put something in place and then, and, and then where do we go from there? So now we have these set of standards and so you, you, then you expect us to go out and find a program that meets these standards?
No, and I actually think that was done.
To do.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, move on.
I, I think it was done before we started, that it matched, you know, the, the.
Yeah, I thought that was the whole point when three, when, is that they were taking the standards and, and trying to mesh it in between. So that way they weren't Massachusetts state standards, they were our own.
Right.
And that was the whole point that they've been physically working and meeting on them for the last three years.
Right.
That's what we were doing, so.
Cuz I feel like we've been told over and over again it's based on Massachusetts standards.
It was until we, until we started.
Until we started grading and until teachers started building their own.
Right.
You know, with everything.
I would ask the teachers.
I was told we were using mass standards, so.
I think that's.
So, so we've been both told is that we're using mass standards, so.
Everybody, I mean, you see, we're sitting here saying no, but it really, everybody thinks we're using.
So now you have Erin that has taught and he's saying, yes, we use mass standards.
Yeah, Massachusetts standards is what we use because we did not adopt the Common Core standard.
But then we were.
Pardon?
I thought we didn't want Common Core.
No, that's why we did not approve the Common Core standards. So we used Massachusetts standards because at the time.
And then.
At the time, they were.
Recreating them for our own.
They were great, yeah. And that's, and that's what we.
Oh, let's look into some more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think so too.
I, I think you need to go back. I don't know if Mr. Nation has any of the um paperwork from the previous administration.
Yeah, I got all of it.
The files, that would be nice. You know, it's just, all I want is, you know, for um, for the town to look and say, these are our standards and this is what we're striving and want the children to learn in each grade. You know, we're just not sitting here sticking them in front of a computer. I don't, no parent wants that. No parent wants to hear that, so.
Okay.
You, you know, just focus on what we have.
All right, so next we have stipend positions. Um, athletic director, eighth grade fundraiser coordinator, and yearbook coordinator, uh, job descriptions.
Yes, so I wanted to think athletic director back because I remember when we were having a discussion, um, I thought it was five thousand and I think it was, it was said, no, it's four thousand and it was, I said, I think it's five thousand and then I wanted to let the board know it is five thousand.
It is, yep.
So I wanted to make sure I brought that back around because it, it was, I think in our minutes it said four thousand and, and um, that's what we thought it was, but it wasn't. It was definitely five thousand.
This is gonna ask, can you tell us what we paid last year for these positions versus what you're doing now?
Uh, I might be able to.
The athletic director was five thousand.
Yeah, the athletic director.
I think they're all the same.
The athletic director was five thousand. Um, so one of the things that we did, so that, remember that was Kim Hurley. She has, has taken that position, so she has been doing that. Then we have the um eighth grade fundraiser coordinator. We actually kind of almost split that into it because we had two people apply for that and they both said, can we work together? And so they um would like to work together on it. That is per the contract, it says twenty-five dollars an hour.
Yep.
And so they're, they're, it's twenty-five dollars an hour, but it's up to three thousand dollars because that's what the person was paid last year.
Yep.
So they're amongst themselves, they're figuring out who works what hours and so that's what they're getting paid for. So it's three thousand dollars. And that was Alyssa and Caitlin, right? So that was Alyssa and Caitlin.
So that's fifteen hundred dollars each?
Not necessarily, because it depends upon.
Who does it the work?
Yes, yeah. So it's twenty-five dollars an hour, up to three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
To me, depending upon what to, yes, correct. Yeah, it's not three thousand dollars apiece, it's three thousand total.
Okay.
And then the yearbook coordinator, the same type of thing, that is, that is Alyssa. She did it last year as well. That is twenty-five dollars an hour, up to fifteen hundred. And that's what she got paid last year.
Yep.
So that's what we did. So one of the things we talked about with the, with the union is it'd be much easier if we could meet and say, let's just say you get paid this much money versus twenty-five dollars an hour for, you know, and that way they don't have to clock their hours, they don't do that. This way we say, okay, it's, this one's five thousand dollars, this one is fifteen hundred dollars, this one is three thousand dollars. This way we have a, a set amount because it's very difficult to kind of figure, cuz there's only eighteen thousand dollars in this pool.
Yeah.
For the, the stipends. So this way if we know how much is coming out of each stipend, it's much easier. And then we decided, when I met with them, I said, well, we're gonna have to put a cap on these. Cuz if we're just saying twenty-five dollars an hour, somebody could, could use like, you know, cuz some of it's a lot of work.
Yep.
Could go over, you know, five, six thousand dollars and then we, we have to cancel something for kids. So I would, and they agreed. They said, yeah, we'll look at it next year and maybe capping, putting caps on them, so.
I think it wa, I. Sorry, I think it was capped. It was um, and the stipends were given out like twice a year then.
Yes.
For twenty-five dollars an hour, I want to say that that's put in there if there's a new activity that comes up or something extra, they get paid that, which would only be like a couple hours. I think that's what it is.
Yeah, it says stipend positions. Yes, stipend positions, which they said the stipends are.
Like one could come out, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So I think that's why that was put in there. But uh, the stip, uh, the stipends go through the committee too, so.
Do we have to blast through this agenda, wrestle it away or get seven o'clock?
Yeah, I mean, we have business to conduct, so be efficient.
We'll be good.
Well, I'm looking at safety inspection and I think that had to go along with what I already said. So then we can just go right over that one, so.
So then we have the eighth grade field trip, Washington trip.
Yes, and so you have in your documents, and I know Erin and I have been working on this and we're very thankful that now we have an eighth grade coordinator to, to be doing, take this, this from us. But um, the, the children have been raising money and then it dawned on me that I haven't even brought, I know we've spoken about it numerous times with the board, but I have never brought it to the board for you guys to, to give your stamp of approval because this is an out of state field trip. It's an overnight field trip. And I was like, I said to Asia, I was like, did I have to bring that to the board? I know we've had discussions. She goes, I don't think you have. So I said, well, whether I have or I haven't, put it on the agenda because I wanna make sure um that we do. But you'll see that um, the, this is the information. The parents had a presentation and this was the information that the parents received. So we have, it's seventeen hundred dollars per student. The students are doing an amazing job raising money. We probably, they probably have raised like nine thousand dollars so far. And if you figure, they just started like a month ago, so this is really good, so they, they really wanna go. Currently we only have about twenty-one students signed up, so I think we need to get a little bit of a push on that. Um, but the, the kids would, this is something that they're excited about going. I did write to um the, both of our sen, our senators and asked if our kids could go in the White House versus just stand on the outside. So I'm waiting to hear back. So they say if you do it enough time, that, that kids can go actually inside the White House and toward the White House.
That's cool.
Versus just at the outside of the gate. So I'm hoping that our kids get approved to do that. I'm hoping we get approved this evening.
I'm just saying as long as it's safe.
Absolutely. So the goal, the goal this year is I will be going, right? It's the first time going. And I, and so I said, um, so Erin will be going as the AP and I said, you know, I think I'm gonna go as well because I just need to make sure everything's hunky-dory cuz when I put my stamp of approval on something, I just need to make sure, you know, and, and kind of go over the guidelines with them on how do we make sure? Even though, it, cuz I get nervous when we have kids overnight someplace, right? I get very nervous with that. And so how do we make sure our kids are staying in their rooms? You know, granted, they have um chaperones, but I still think it's our responsibility to make sure. One of the things that, that I learned from, cuz I used to take kids on this trip and what we used to do is take the tape and tape the outside of the door because if you open the door, your tape is now broken and you can't re-tape it. So somebody has to re-tape it for you and that would probably be another kid, then how are they gonna tape their room, right? So this is just, you know, little tricks of the trade that I've learned by going, so it's working with the team that goes down there.
It's just, there's a lot of unrest.
Uh, question, Erin, can you answer this? So roughly about sixty thousand we talked about before, right? So sev, about roughly seven. So sev, about roughly seventeen hundred dollars per student. If we only have twenty-one, does that total go down?
Um, no.
Or is it a set figure?
So the, the, the fee is, the, the number stays the same, so basically the only way the number changes is if we go over fifty-one kids. If we try to try to put too many people on the bus, then we have to get another bus. Um, so the way they book stuff out with the buses and the hotels, um, if the number of kids that participate go down, the cost per kid goes up.
Goes up?
Yes, so the, the pricing is based off of thirty-five kids, based off of.
And we're at, we're at twenty-one, is that early?
Yeah, so I am lur, looking right now, I remember I had communication with the lady I've been talking to that's organizing, I thought the number was close to thirty.
Okay, it may have went up, this was, this was when she called us about.
Well, that's good news.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I know that like, there are a handful of kids who aren't interested, most everybody else is like, yeah, I definitely wanna go. Um, whether they have registered or not, kids can register themselves, so the parents have to register them, so. Um, they had extended the deadline for us a little bit. I don't know about if we have kids who go, oh, I didn't, uh, get the, communication to my parents, is it too late? Um, I don't answer that question. So I gotta, um, talk to the lady at.
So you, you don't know if the deadline's changed?
The deadline did change and then passed again, so, um, I have to talk to, um, Grace at World Strides and say, um, if I have, get a sense about some kids who are like, yeah, I definitely wanna go, um, I just didn't get registered cause I can't do it myself, figure out like, can we just register them still? Um, I'm not sure the answer yet.
Okay. Let's go.
Um, I know we did the parent night, did we do an email blast and a phone call blast through Alma for grade eight?
Yeah, um, probably four.
Okay, good, thanks.
So with that said, can I get a motion?
To approve the DC trip.
To approve the DC trip, DC trip.
I make a motion to approve the DC trip.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so let's move on to the emergency, uh, well, we talked about free and reduced lunch already, right? So move on to the emergency plans for sport related injuries, which is an FYI.
This was kind of a, we've had this come up before, right?
Yeah.
You went over it again with them?
It's just every year where we, that we should bring this forward with you. And what, what it is, is the athletic director looks at it to see if there's any changes that need to take place. And, and then we just bring it as an FYI to the board so that way they can view it and just see that no changes have been made and that we're still following the protocols, the policies for that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just would like to add to that, um, it did change, um, the state legislature, um, to have the plan in place. And I think it was, it was two years ago, so it does need to be looked at every year and we had.
The athletic director, the last gym teacher.
The athletic director, um, the nurse and the health teacher. And it went to the wellness committee as well to, um, you know, to go over it and look through it. So there was, you know, again, a large group, large part of the, um, staff had input into this.
All right, anything else on that one? All right, so we have the area school board meeting.
So the Rochester school would like to do a meeting with the, our dis, our school. And so I was just wondering if there is a date that you prefer to meet. So at one time they were thinking the twenty, I, cause I was like, well, we don't know if you guys wanna have so many meetings, so I said, the twenty-first would work, but then we just, we scheduled a budget meeting.
Yep.
And so I don't know if you wanna do it in November and do it at, um, another time in November, or if you wanted to wait till after the holidays, whichever works best for you. Um, we can let them know when, a few dates that work for the board.
Did they have any dates they wanted to meet?
Um, well, they said in October and they were talking about Wednesdays.
That's when their board meetings are. That's what.
That's when their board meetings are.
Yeah.
Maybe they can move, maybe the November eighteenth or second one, maybe we can just switch it to a Rochester one before then.
His budget will be done by then.
Do you think? Well, I'm, I'm sorry, I keep looking at Bob because he's on budget too, so.
So we, we used to, I don't know if they still do, but we, we're going there, I take it.
We can always.
No, no, they come here too.
They, but since we've, yeah, since I've been on the board, they haven't.
They do?
Yeah. No, it's been a while, it's been a long time.
Six years, they haven't.
They have, they have come here.
Let's invite them here.
So you wanna do November eighteenth here?
Yeah, see if they'd like to come.
Sure.
Okay, same time at five thirty?
Yeah.
Unless they need it to be six.
Unless they need six.
Okay.
But.
Come and bring dinner.
And open it, huh?
Come and bring dinner.
Yeah. We can still start at five thirty and work on other stuff.
Yeah, we could do something, yeah.
Move the minutes and stuff, you know.
All right, I will reach out to them and then let everyone know.
All right.
Eighteenth.
Yeah, it's our second meeting.
Thanks. I don't know why I blanked it. Who?
I have, I have a question.
Okay.
So, uh, I don't know where we're on right now.
We're on this right now and you're the, you're officially the board chair right now, cause he had to leave, so do you wanna move to New Hampshire Fairness?
Go ahead.
All right, so.
I mean, you see him leave.
Yes, so these, these are the, um, fires that went up, they're on our website, they went out, um, to the community. Currently, we have about thirty-five people signed up to go to this event, so we're gonna push it out again, um, so that way we can get more people to attend, so we're really excited. So please go on, it's on our website as well, that people can go on and sign up to attend this event. So if anybody, if a board member hasn't signed up yet, if you can please sign up, because they say that they'd like to have fifty people in order to run the meeting. And that will be held here. I'm sorry?
I think I signed up, but if we keep continuing it out, do we have to re-sign up again?
If you, did you sign up for the October twenty-second?
I believe I did.
Well, if you want, you can sign up again and if you didn't, then if you did, they'll probably just say, oh, she signed, you already signed up, if not, then, then you're signed up.
We go, I'm sorry, we, so their website, sorry.
Yeah, it's on our website as well as.
Oh, yeah, I must, because it's in my calendar.
There you go.
All right, I must have.
I don't know, I don't know if I did sign up. When's our budget meeting with the town? Do you know?
Isn't it this week?
Don't you have a?
First one, I'll think it's October twenty.
Twenty, it was one of them, first was the twenty-third, twenty.
October twenty-third?
Yep.
Hopefully it's October twenty-second.
Thursday?
Twenty-third, twenty-fifth, and twenty-eighth, I believe.
We don't go to the Saturday one.
I know, I know, well, I, that's why I said it.
So October twenty.
Oh, I, do we get those?
I believe it's, the first one's a Thursday.
You should get noticed.
Is that the town?
I didn't think I got noticed on those.
Is that the town though?
It's, it's all the town stuff.
Those two?
I, I don't think it's the school at all on the Thursday.
Okay, so we don't go yet.
No.
No.
Okay.
Um, let me look into it.
Wednesday.
Okay, all right.
Yes, I, I.
Thank you.
I, I know those three days.
Does budget have one this Thursday?
No, the twenty-third is the first one that I know of. And I sent you all that, right? Well, I sent it to her for her husband.
Yeah, but I kinda need to know the dates too, for us.
Well, don't, don't the budget committee send the dates to, to school?
I haven't received any of them, so.
Yeah, yeah, totally. What did I send you?
I got it up right now, twenty-third, Thursday. It's not us.
It's not us though, right?
It's town.
This is budget areas, general government, I don't see, actually, I was looking on this earlier, I didn't see anything from the school.
Yeah, I don't think any of these are the school.
No, October twenty-third, twenty-fifth, and twenty-ninth, none of them say school.
Are we supposed to let them know when we're ready? Is that what they said at the last, they said, yes, they, all right.
We have to let them know when we're ready.
When we're ready, for sure. You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
I have the dental rates.
So those three, those three dates are not the school.
No.
No.
It is not the school. No, this is all town.
But if you like to come.
Parks, police.
Yeah, you can come, you can go.
All right, let's move on to committee if we can.
Yep, I have a question, uh, Bob?
Yeah.
So, um, this is great, I mean, to see it all right in front of you like this, this is really good. Um, I'm on the joint loss committee, so I see that, you know, the, the days and stuff like that, but what's, what's the times?
Three fifteen.
They're all three fifteens, all of them?
I have that, I have that written too.
Three fifteen, yeah.
And do they have to be that early?
Yes.
When we have the meeting, we talk about, um, like when the next meeting is coming up, is the time you're gonna work that kind of stuff, so. I think if you need it to be pushed back a little bit, that's something.
Oh, I don't, I'm just saying for anybody else that's on them that have a real job.
Yep, heard.
What? Like, I'm just, I'm thinking of Robert Sandray and all these guys.
That's right.
I don't like when people say that.
You don't ever say that.
I don't.
We all have real jobs. Still not nice.
I have a real job. Okay.
Oh.
Yes, so curriculum next?
Oh, yeah, so I, I have to say, um, so update with curriculum. Um, first of all, I really wanna thank Heather, um, being a new board member, just jumped right into curriculum. Doing, we spent the time and did the inventory and I really appreciate all you, I really appreciate all your help. You organized everything on the computer, it was fantastic.
With your direction.
Um, Brad, uh, Brad met with us again on, uh, Friday. I say us, I'll get to the us part. Um, you know, he takes time out of his day, he's got a lot of other stuff to do, you know, and guides us and tells us what needs to go and everything. And there were actually some pieces of furniture that were in decent shape. So Brad and, you know, and then, and some of his crew came and, you know, put the, you know, furniture that was useful and brought it back into the school. Um, so in the Lions Club.
Shout out to Lions.
The members who came, um, so we, all this stuff was in the basement that we filled up, a second dumpster, we'll probably have to do another one, but. Okay, so Lions Club, going down the basement, down the bulkhead, the, the stairs are steep, you know, and I don't know.
I don't like the basement.
I shouldn't, but it's hard to, it's hard to walk down and I just have to say, like, the, um, the Lions Club members that came out were like unbelievable. Because, and carrying, they carried, um, the steel doors, uh, the old, old, old cafeteria tables. I don't even know, I don't even remember those ones, so it was a lot of heavy stuff, it was a lot. I was, I was so thankful to have the Lions there and just, I, I.
A big thank you.
It was, it was huge, but.
Everything, they come to everything.
I just, I, you know, it, I don't know, just, I was just so thankful, I'm so happy that we got this done. This has been, um, you know, had, needed to be done, you know, so we can use the space for what it's supposed to be used for. So we'll keep up with it, um, we're in touch with Brad and, you know, it's just been fantastic. A lot of, it was hard, it was hard work too, so I just wanted to say thank you to everyone, really.
Awesome. Okay.
I never see you, I need to say it.
I know, sorry.
I, I just wanna say that last night, we had almost like a surprise inspection, I don't really wanna call surprise, cause they did call, the fire department came and they decided to do a training, and so they all had their little sheets and they walked around and they, they checked for any violations, so they, so there's some that we'll, we'll fix. But one of the things that the, the, the chief said to me today is that it's obvious you guys have been cleaning the building, cause it looks great. So he was very pleased with how, um, a lot of the junk, he said, there were rooms I went into that I was dreading and I opened the door and I was like, wow.
Yeah.
You know, and he said, so kudos to everybody for, for, he said, it's a big difference, it's nice, he said.
It does.
So that was good.
Put some roller skates on and go in the basement.
All right, so let's move on to policies. Um, the first one we have is policy GBEBA staff dress code, this is a second reading. And if there's no comment, can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve policy GBEBA staff dress code.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next, we have policy BEA, regular board meeting, this is the first reading. And this is our discussion about moving our meetings from one, twice a month to once a month.
Yeah, has anyone's opinion changed? You still want once a month?
I'm fine.
Still want once a month?
Yeah, I'm fine with once a month.
Until, until we need it.
We need to schedule something like we're doing with budget.
So far it's working out well.
Okay.
See how the rest of it goes.
It's been really weird for me, cause I'm like checking my, I'm like, I haven't gotten a gen, like, this is weird, we're going.
It's funny, I said, I was gonna call you and go, why didn't you get a gen?
What, do we get a gen? Checking the website, you know, but yeah.
That's what happens.
Isn't the date that we gave the superintendent for the Rochester school board the second one?
The November eighteen?
Right.
Yes, yep, that way it would be used for something else other than a regular school board stuff.
So keep that even though of this, yeah, okay, gotcha.
Okay, so that is the second, uh, first reading.
First reading, yeah.
We don't have any other discussions on that, uh, we have policy, uh, JFAD tuition expense for non-identified preschool students. Let's see.
Little cheat sheet.
Oh, nice. So this is a first reading?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not noted.
Yeah, it just doesn't say.
I'm sorry, what?
It just doesn't say.
Oh.
All right, so it looks like the Donna's cheat sheet says, uh, it's removing cost from non-identified preschool students.
I have something to say on this policy. Uh, we've always had, uh, tuition for non-identified students that come into preschool. Um, the previous fee was two hundred and forty dollars per month. Um, I would like to see it go down to two hundred dollars a month. Um, that is a, a fair fee for the preschool, but the, uh, pol, the policy meeting, the other members did not want to charge money for the preschool. Um, since this, since the.
Kinda have to.
Pardon?
You kinda have to.
Well, since the preschool program came in, came to the PAU school, we've always had, there's always been a fee. But apparently, uh, no one's ever charged it, no one's ever sent a bill.
Oh, no, see, we used to in person pay weekly into the front office.
Well, for the past, I don't know, six, seven years, it hasn't.
Because if we don't charge it, then we're gonna put the, uh, preschools out of business.
Well, not only that.
Well, we charge for before and after care, why wouldn't we charge for preschool?
Yeah, exactly.
Michelle?
I built last year and it was only two people.
I'm sorry, what?
I built last year and it was only two people all year.
Oh, but that they didn't pay, did they pay?
Yeah.
Donna?
Oh, I was told.
Yep.
Okay, so the reason why that the, we brought this to, to not pay was the fact that the, what you do is when you have a specialized program such as this, that you have, um, your special ed students and you have your regular ed students combined together. And the purpose of that is for your regular ed students to teach your special ed students proper skills, right? How to sit at a table, how to communicate, how to have conversation. And so charging them for doing a service for us, that's like, you, you know, it doesn't make sense because the kids are there for a purpose. The impact, I don't think it is going to be that impactful because it's not like we're, I mean, our class size is twelve, right? And we were required to have at least six of them be special ed students, right? So it would be six kids in the morning for fourth, third, well, whichever, it'd be six and six, right? So it would be six and six, so it'd be a total. Right, so it would be six and six, so it would be a total of twelve kids, but they would be different ages. So it would be six kids, so I don't think it would, it'd be impactful. Would it impact? Probably, right, but it would be a lottery, so not everybody would have the opportunity to be part of this program.
So just to follow up on what Donna was saying, the way I look at this is, our job as a board is to serve the best interests of the students in our school. And to do that, to provide this preschool program, to have students serving as models, we need to attract people to this program. And one way to do that is by not charging them tuition, and this tuition that we did charge, I think that was even higher than the preschools were charging. So that was certainly a disincentive to come here.
Anything, oh, Carol.
Effective preschools utilize peer role models, and right now, we don't have, um, full capacity of the peer role models involved.
Anything else, this is a first reading, so.
Pardon?
It's a first reading, right?
Yes.
Alright, so let's move on, we have policy BDE committees and delegates. This is a first reading too, I assume? Looks like this is an update for N H S Association.
We're.
Uh, Heather?
We'll be looking at taking transportation off this list, I think, because get rid of transportation. Once we're done with transportation.
Yeah.
Alright, so it's a first reading, anything else on that one?
Okay.
Alright, next, we have policy JCA, change of class or school assignment, best interest and manifest hardship, first reading. Small edits to remove the same line throughout the policy is what it says. What's that? Any comments? Alright, so policy BEDG minutes, first reading. Changes made by N H SBA. Anything on that one for anybody?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, yep.
The last one is policy JEC, change of school or assignment, which is a withdrawal, um, yeah. So this is, we have JCA, so this is a, is redundant.
Yep. I make a motion to withdraw policy JEC, change of school or assignment.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so that's policies, uh, next, let's get into nominations, hires, and resignations. So we have some FYI.
Yep.
Any questions?
Is this the other signature? Yeah, okay. I was looking for the email one this time, and I found it on this one, but then I wasn't sure if that was, I couldn't tell whose android it was.
Oh, I don't know, it's Ray.
So I wasn't sure if that was the email. Okay, that's others. This I knew, cause I was still looking for the typed one.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's it, right?
Yep. So we do have a resignation.
And it's, but it's still just FYI.
Just FYI.
And they're just, they're, um, existing positions, correct?
And it seems also very immediate, the resignation, is there?
Okay.
So we don't have anything for follow-up?
I, I, I have a question, though, I'm sorry, I do have a question. Um, I'm sorry, I apologize if I forget, the, um, the, can the school get a Venmo account?
I am trying, Erin, I, I'm trying to get my account set up.
Oh, you want the school one, and, so we voted on this.
Yeah, we voted on this last time, for me, for me to get one, and so I have been working on trying to get one. And so I know Erin had it last, and there was some things that we needed to work out, so.
Okay, so you, so, because I, you know, read it through the, I know we approved.
Right.
Yeah, for you to use your personal Venmo account.
Well, I, I'm gonna open up a separate one, not my personal one, so it's gonna be, I'm gonna have a second one that's gonna be used for school purpose only.
Okay.
But I have your name?
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just wanted.
But you're not, you're not the only one that has it, though.
Correct, I, I have Erin having access to it.
You also have one too, right?
No, he doesn't have one, he'll have access to mine.
Melissa?
I have my own, so like, when, when I purchased all the moms and for the Lions, you know, like, for that, but I haven't.
Right, that's why I asked, but you use that for the school.
She purchased it for herself.
No, when she came to the Lions meeting and sent all the money to her.
Yeah, and I wrote a big, big check to the school for all of the.
I, I think we did, vote, I think we voted on that too, though, we voted on that too, though.
No.
To give permission.
No, we didn't, we didn't. That's why, that's why, I don't know if you knew that.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure there's like, one account, you know, you can add whoever's name.
Yep.
I just, just double checking.
Yeah, no.
Cause I was actually shocked when you did that at the Lions meeting.
I know I took a risk, but I trusted you guys, I trust you all.
Yep.
I did it.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have a public comment, we can open that up, do we have anything, public comment?
Matt, where's Matt?
I just have one more quick thing, just, this resignation seemed quite urgent, is there, they've been offered an exit interview or anything? Or is there anything we can assist or help with, or is it just something out of our control and not worry about?
Um, every staff member can do an exit interview.
Okay. Yep.
Yeah.
With that said, um, can I get a motion to go to non-public?
I'll make a motion to go, sorry, into non-public, no, are we going, oh, hold on, under hour saying ninety-one, A, three, two, C.
Second. We'll call?
Colin's eye.
What eye?
Al Kaskas eye, Al Pharaoh eye, sorry.
Alright, she calls like her eye, alright, we are in non-public, thank you.